Good afternoon. Welcome to the Bojor City Council Regular Meeting, 3:00 PM, Tuesday, April 18th, 2023. We have the call to order, invitation, Jeff Darby, pledge of allegiance, Jeff Free. Please stand.
Father, thank you for this time that you allowed us to be in this place for the business of this city. We thank you for those who are here. We thank you, Lord, for those who serve others. We pray, Lord God, for our community. We pray for our estate. We pray for our nation. We ask you, Lord God, to continue to give us direction to serve as we should serve. We ask that you protect those who serve others in the capacity of policing and fire. We ask you, Lord God, to be with us. Lord, give us direction today to do the things that bring glory and honor to your name. And in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammonds.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the City Council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly. And if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City Council appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The chair will entertain the motion.
Bless you.
To approve the minutes of April 4th, 2023, regular council meeting and expensive reading.
The move.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Please cast your vote. Any revisions to the agenda for today?
Motion carries. No, sir, I have no revisions for today.
Any ceremonial matters or special guests?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second. End of discussion. And any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel. Fine, come on, Phil.
Is yours not Marsha, Mr. Williams? What is your vote?
What do you do with it? Right there.
Open it up. CEA.
I showed you online.
Thank you.
Motion carries.
Put something extra in the paper. You have a job there.
Thank you, Mr. Free.
All right. Next, next item.
Bids. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 1111-2022, the 803 Butler Street demolition.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Thomas H. The dilapidated structure at 617 Whittington Street, we're doing Butler first, 803 Butler Street, was approved at the administrative court meeting on February 14th, 2023.
I have a question before you start those bids. I see where four people signed in to be eligible to bid, but there's only three of them.
Yes, we do only have three. One did not submit a bid. Right, they went to the, to the, thank you, the pre-bid meeting at, at the locations. And I guess they decided not to submit any.
Thank you.
Okay, the first bid for 803 Butler Street is Brian Bristow. We didn't have any addendums on this. They do have the bid bond. The bid amount is for $17,548. That's seventeen five four eight point zero zero.
I'm sorry.
Who is the name of the company?
Sorry, Abatement Services.
Thank you.
What was the price again?
Seventeen, seventeen five forty-eight. So seventeen thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. The next bid is from Eagle Industries. Twenty-one thousand two hundred and four dollars. It's twenty-one two zero four.
Is there a bid bond on that?
There is a bid bond. Okay, and the last bid for 803 Butler is from Precision Builders. They also have their bid bond, and their bid is for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and three dollars. That's twenty-seven eight oh three. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
The move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Smith, end of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number 1126-2022, 617 Whittington Street demolition.
Okay, the bids for 617 Whittington Street were also recommended for demolition at the administrative court meeting of February 14th. Our first bid is again from Abatement Services. They do have their bid bond. And it is for sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. That's sixteen five sixty-four. The next bid is from Eagle Industries. The total on this bid is thirty-seven thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars. They do have their bid bond. Thirty-seven four forty-six. And the last bid today is from Precision Builders. Their bid is for twenty thousand five hundred dollars, and they do have their bid bond. That's two zero five zero zero point zero zero. I ask that you approve the reading of these bids.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Smith, end of discussion. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearings, actions on unfinished business. Adopt an ordinance to enlarge the limits and boundaries of the city of Bojor City by annexing approximately seventy-one point zero zero three acres adjacent to the current city limits west of Airline Drive and south of Winkle Road. Final reading.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Maggio. End of discussion. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary for the city of Bojor City to lease a twenty-one point one eight six acre tract of land to Chasing Aces Sports Entertainment LLC for the appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4712. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hammonds, second. Mr. Free, end of discussion, counsel. And this is the final reading. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute any and all documents necessary for the sale of five point three three acres in Stockwell subdivision to Chasing Aces Sports Entertainment LLC for appraised value pursuant to Louisiana Revised Statute 33:4712. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hammonds, second by Mr. Maggio. End of discussion. It's also a final reading. And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance appropriating the sum of $200,000 for the EMS Capital and Contingency Fund for the purchase of forty new portable radios for the Bojor City Fire Department. Final reading.
The move. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Free, end of discussion. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Treasury and State of Louisiana. Final reading.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Williams. End of discussion. Any comments?
Yeah, do, Mr. President. I know this is another one with the state of Louisiana. I know several meetings ago, we were talking about trying to recoup some of our money from the state of Louisiana through DOTD on other projects.
The one project we're looking to get our money back on is, is the Coleman Street project. And we're still working through that. We don't have it in hand yet, but we push once a week, give or take, maybe once every other week on where they're at with that process so we can get that back. It's a little over a hundred thousand dollars on that one. This particular CEA and the one that we recently did are for, total between the twos, a hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand for Benton Road, seventy-five thousand for Hamilton Road. It was in a direct appropriation through, it's really through FPNC. It's not through DOTD, so that helps a little bit. But that's, that's the best I can give you as of today on that.
All right.
We've been meeting with contractors on this. We're anxious to get both of those. Once school is out, we'd like to have contractors getting out there pretty quickly to get that work completed.
Awesome. Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
The floor is open for any comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. New business. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bojor City which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to prevent, repair, or replace infrastructure due to the severe winter storm event in December of 2022 at a cost not to exceed three hundred and five thousand dollars to come from the Disaster Reserve Fund. First and final reading.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Williams, second. Was it Mr. Smith? Okay. Any discussion, counsel?
Mr. Russianback, could you explain what the preventative measures are and how that'll help us in the future?
Yeah, there's several on there. Thanks for bringing that up, Councilman Smith. So of the three hundred and five thousand, give or take, about half of that is for items that we believe will be beneficial for us in the future. Two of those are pretty big-ticket items. One is a mag meter to meter water we're sending to Barksdale at the West Gate. So currently, when we do that, we're, we're having to use the honor system on how much water that they get billed for in prior years and average that out, and we send that. So it helps with billing, but it'll also help us know specifically how much water's going to the base during, during a freeze. So that's a pretty big-ticket item. It's a twelve-inch diameter main. It'll need to have a vault and all the components with it. And then we're looking at adding pressure monitoring equipment at all of the fire districts. So we have to put in a pressure analyzer on their service lines, the thought process behind that. This past freeze, the fire department was very instrumental in, in helping us do water turnoffs and turn-ons and just eyes and ears out in the field. They're there, they're manning that twenty-four seven. So we'll feed in the pressure values in those districts and have that set up in our SCADA system so we can monitor system pressure throughout the community anytime, not just a freeze, but anytime it'll be beneficial. And if we're seeing a problem or we need them to go investigate something, we, we have people there that, you know, that are working and available. So that's that. And that's a pretty expensive item because it's, give or take, you know, ten or twelve thousand per station to put all of that in, wire it, put the sensors in, and get all of that piped into the plant. And then the last is just some miscellaneous, about ten grand for just some minimum odds and ends, heat blankets, insulation, things like that, just to have stored so that we've got easy access to those things in the future. Much of what you see, you know, in the cost, a big part of that were, you know, we were buying propane. We were buying, you know, various bits and bobs, and we had several components, backflow preventers and things like that that, that we had to get support and repairing. And, and then we had some labor in there from a couple of companies that were helping us throughout the freeze. But that's in general what it's for, and I'm recommending approval.
I don't know if you can answer this or maybe Angela. What, what's the origin of the revenue in the Disaster Reserve Fund?
I don't know the answer to that. Actually, I think I might, but I'll let you answer.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? The revenue?
Is this like Jeopardy? No, just the origin. Where did the money originally come from in the Disaster Reserve Fund?
The, it was some COVID money from a prior year. And when we get FEMA money, it goes into that fund as well.
It's the what?
Some prior COVID money.
Yeah, no, what was the?
The FEMA. If we file for FEMA funds, we'll put it in that fund as well.
All right, thank you.
The FEMA was my recollection.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $2,500,000 in matching funds from the Water Capital and Contingency Fund for the $5 million American Rescue Plan Act Water Sector Program Grant. First reading.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith and second by Mr. Williams. Ms. Lutheim, would you give us a brief on this?
This is the city's match required. The total project is seven point five million. We received a $5 million grant, so the city's match is the two point five million.
Any discussion, counsel?
Yeah, I do. So this is, so it's down in, down in my district. So is this going from Hope Street back north? Is what, is what this is gonna do?
Part of it is a consolidation. We'll tag team.
Yeah, it, it's, it really originates around Golden Meadows. And this project, things important to understand originated before the port. We were looking at replacing this line. It's an old ductile iron main. Ductile iron isn't the best when it comes to water quality and age. It can tuberculate and things like that.
Rain needing.
Yes, sir, you said it. So it's been on the books a long time. The synergy between the port, the Water Sector Program, and the consolidation of a water system helped us get a $5 million infusion from the state to get this project moving forward. It will benefit what, what's happening down at the port. But I think it's important that that wasn't what the, that wasn't what originated the, the project, but it will benefit.
So just with this water line you're replacing right here, that's gonna help with the water quality?
It will.
To?
Yeah, and, and that's long range. You know, put a plastic pipe in and, and it'll, it'll do much better than what Councilman Williams is dealing with over in his district with a lot of old ductile pipes that are heavily tuberculated and pretty rotten.
Yeah, well, one comes before two.
He's actually three.
Three. Oh, it comes before both of y'all then. One, two, and three.
He said, oh, because he's after a date with me, that's why. He said, I'm the old two.
All right, thanks.
We had some fun Sunday.
So did that help getting this grant, what we previously did?
Yes, sir. We, we, this was the second try at it. So I think probably what got it over the finish line this go-around, we were close in the first round, probably within a handful, four or five, short of getting funded. And I think adding the consolidation and talking up, you know, the ability to supply water to the port was, was important to getting that five million.
Awesome. Good job. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
I think, Dave.
Do to, do from is there?
Yes, sir, it is. Any other questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you both. Any comments? Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate $300,000 from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund for a left-turn lane on US 71 at Golden Meadows and to contract with Civil Design Group LLC to provide design services. First and final reading, or first reading, I'm sorry.
The move. Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Smith and seconded by Mr. Williams. And this is in District One, I'm sure. Any, any comments? The floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate funds for security improvements for the city of Bojor City Municipal Complex for a total of $600,000 to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund. First reading.
The move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel?
Yep. Go ahead. Uh, man, I know myself and Brian went to the first meeting. Was there any other meetings after, after the first one we had that, that, that was talked about or what we're gonna do now with the $600,000? Or why we weren't invited, I guess?
That might be on me, I don't know. After the first meeting, we were working, Kevin Bryan, the architect, was, was working through some concepts. I think we made it available to some of the council. Were you there the second meeting? Well, that's on.
No, that's just why we were kind of confused that we went to that one and they said, y'all, the architect's gonna draw up some stuff, then we're gonna meet again. We're gonna talk about what he dropped and then we have it on the agenda.
And we can, we can bring some more here, probably need to. Yeah. The, the architect came in. We met with, with them and the administration. Originally, we were looking at directly underneath the breezeway out here, if you'll recall. And it's just not enough space to fit everything in there. And so they're recommending, this is the bigger of the two options. And really, we don't think the first option underneath the breezeway was, was a good one. But this pulls that breezeway out, so the space is a little larger. It takes out, you know, you gotta remove the concrete, put in a, it's a big, it's a lot of work for, for this. So when the measure was put together, this is for design, construction, everything, that particular dollar amount. And we can bring some drawings and show that to you. That may be my fault that y'all, it wasn't intentional, but it was one of those things. When did we meet on that? It dragged a long, long time, and we finally got some stuff going. I'm like, look, if, if there's no money associated with it, then we're all wasting our time. So let's get some money appropriated for the project and then begin sitting down and talking about the physical geometry, the paint colors, the flooring, and the security and how, all of that. And so it was, it was really my desire for the council to get a feel for what that's gonna cost. And if, if you're, if you wanna move forward with it, I believe that's a solid number to get what we need out here. And then we can begin the nitty-gritty of what it's gonna look like and, and all of that and really begin to have some productive discussion and, and work that floor plan, so.
I think we had money, because I remember calling Angela about the, how much was in the building and the grounds. And she gave me a number, which, of course, I don't remember from seven months ago, but at least we're getting started on it, and that's what, that's what.
Yeah, and I, I think this, this will do something. This is really what is merited there. There's gonna be some other needs once that, that space gets built out. But I wanted to make sure that the council was behind it with, with funding. And, and if, if we can get that appropriated, then we'll put some gasoline on, on, you know, developing a more constructive coordination meeting with everybody and, and really put some hard edges on what it's gonna look like.
So, well, you were saying that was gonna be my question. Did you originally talk about the municipal building fund? Is that the source of funding?
I think the bills, was it building?
Or building, whatever.
Building grounds here, whatever it is.
What was it, why would we choose Riverboat Gaming?
I apologize, I must have forgotten we talked about the other fund, so.
Like I said, it's been several months ago. I just wanted to see what was in it. We need to get a start on this stuff, but wherever you wanna pull it from. That's what it's, it was a couple million, isn't it?
Yeah, historically, and of course, there's, you know, we have some newer councilmen on, on the sitting up here. So historically, well, anyway, I'm not gonna go back all the way, but there was a time where Riverboat money was being used for operational expenses. We, in 'oh nine or 'ten, somewhere around there, nine, you know, decided that we would not ever use that again for operating. We weaned ourselves, and we dedicated that to capital projects throughout the city, whether it be roads or anything. So my preference would be that we go back to the municipal building fund, whatever it's called, and seek the source of funding there first. And then if there's a deficit, then I would be in agreement to pull from Riverboat Capital. So I would ask that we take a look at that.
I'll check the numbers on that.
So, Mr. Montgomery, are you saying we should continue this item or go forward?
Yeah, whatever.
Phil, let's go, I think we can change it right now, can't we?
I thought we.
If there's money in the account, I mean, I don't know if she needs to check the account or not, but if there's money in the account, or you can continue it to next council meeting.
I'm, I'm willing to make the motion on the floor to take it out to municipal if you can check that real quick. I'm, I'm willing to make the motion on the floor to take it out to municipal if you can check that real quick.
Okay.
While, while she's checking that, it says in here that KBA provided an opinion of probable cost for six hundred thousand. So that number's real fluid right now. We don't know.
It's fluid, but it's strong.
Okay.
And I asked them for that, you know, and it's, it's hard to, we're still at thirty thousand feet, Councilman Smith. So, you know, until we get, like I said, down in the nitty gritty, but I think that, that that amount of money is adequate to do what, what we need to do here and it not be kind of a Band-Aid on the front of the building. So that's, that's why it is what it is. Hopefully, you know, it's cheap, but.
And will that six hundred thousand also include technology as well as the actual building?
No, sir. It's just, it, it includes the, the fees from, from the various design professionals working on it, get us through bid and construction costs and things like that. But the fit out, the finish, the fixtures and equipment, things like that. Is that, am I recalling that correctly? For equipment? Okay. It does include equipment then.
Okay. You got pretty schedules that we can look at after, after meeting stuff?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, it'll give you a good feel for what it is. I mean, we don't have any two, three dimensional drawings, but it'll give, give you a feel.
Okay. So it's my appreciation that Mr. Montgomery is going to request the money be taken out of the municipal fund versus the River, Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund? And that's an amendment or is that just a revision to the writing of?
It would have to be an amendment, and then you would have to motion, uh, make a motion to reintroduce as amended.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Does he have a second for that motion?
Is there money available or do we need to skip that item and come back to it?
Set, set it again?
Do we wanna skip this item and come back to it?
Yeah, can we come back?
We can add back the funds? Okay. Yeah, that's, we could do that.
So we'll move on to number five. While we're waiting to hear back on that one, we'll move on to number five. Introduce an ordinance to approve change order number one for the twenty twenty-two citywide street improvement space project with a decrease of a hundred and thirty thou, a hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and four dollars and thirty-six cents. First reading.
Send it.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith and second, Mr. Free. Discussion? And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating the sum of ninety-five thousand dollars from the Equipment Replacement Fund for a modernization upgrade for the elevator in Bossier City Hall. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second. Mr. Maggio, end of discussion.
I thought Chief Zagone had his hand up.
Brad, what's your?
And the floor is open for comments.
How, how long is the elevator gonna be down? Or will it still be operable while they're doing this?
From what I understand, they'll start ordering the parts. And we talked about trying to do it toward the end of the year when we have less traffic. And they're saying around three weeks, and then we'll make adjustments from everybody upstairs. If some ADA compliance, we'll be able to still come downstairs and assist the handicap.
Any additional comments? Discussion? Any comments from the public? Please cast your vote.
Has it popped up, counsel?
Yeah, ma'am. Here it is.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute an agreement between the City of Bossier City and Ingalls Information Security LLC to continue to provide management, detection, response, and network security monitoring services to the City of Bossier City. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second. Mr. Smith, discussion? The floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of a part-time event coordinator for the Bossier City Civic Center, the Bossier Civic Center, I'm sorry, first and final reading.
So move.
Second. Got a motion made by Mr. Smith, seconded. Chair, end of discussion.
Yeah, I got, I got one. I guess I could wait, but. Carol, our mayor, how many, how many part-time people we got over there now? Can you answer that?
We just have one. Actually, we have two. Charlene, that does concessions, is part-time. And then I have Zach, and that's who's resigning.
Oh, he's leaving?
Yes. He's moving to.
And the reason I ask that, uh, do you think we could, we could put part-time positions on our Manning chart? I know, I know Parks and Rec's got some, not, not lifeguards, umpires, just that way we can have an idea about that, too.
Mr. Williams. Yeah, the motion, second. Um, any?
Counsel.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Please cast your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of one police officer. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Motion, Mr. Free, uh, excuse me, Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Hammond, seconded. And any comments? Any comments from the public? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of an engineering aide for the engineering department and backfilling any position this aide create. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Maggio. End of discussion. Floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to contract with HNTB to provide support in developing a stormwater master plan. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Free, second. Mr. Williams. Ms. Patrick, you wanna give us just a brief?
Yes, sir. So in the twenty twenty-three budget, we had asked to, to budget for this. And this is the inception of trying to start a stormwater master plan for the entire city when it comes to new development and also protecting the existing development that's out there so that we're not causing any rises in those base flood elevations. Anytime FEMA comes in and redoes their flood, their flood maps, it's always subject to that. So we wanna make sure that we're pushing that forward. And this is just the inception of it. Once we get them on board and going, there will be planning meetings and committees that will be with the administration and with the council to see how we wanna move all that forward.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Patrick. And the floor is open for comments. Let's cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Before we get to the reports, are we going to go back to item number four on the new business?
There are funds available in the building maintenance fund, so if we can switch it to that funding source.
What's name of the fund again?
Building Maintenance Fund.
Building Maintenance.
I make the motion that we, um, take the six hundred thousand from building maintenance.
Second.
We have a motion to amend. We gotta vote on the amendment.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams, seconded. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
We need to accept the agenda as amended?
Introduce as amended.
Okay. Make the motion we introduced is amended.
Second.
Mr. Montgomery, motion to introduce as amended, seconded by Mr. Smith. And any discussion? Any comments?
Thank you, Angela.
Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Move down to reports. Ms. Williamson, Finance Director, Monthly Financial Report.
Good afternoon, counsel. Mayor Chandler. You have before you the financials for the month ended March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. These are preliminary results since the prior year has not been closed out yet. We expect to make adjustments through April. Page one is the revenue by fund. The city is currently thirty-three percent over budget. The majority of the increase in sales tax capital revenue is due to an increase in sales tax revenue and transfers into the capital fund current year. Riverboat capital revenue is down due to a decrease in gaming revenue. And there was also a transfer of a hundred and twenty-three thousand from Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund in March twenty twenty-two for the Benton at I two twenty left turn lane project. Water and Sewer EMS and Public Service and Sanitation Fund revenue is up because five cycles were billed in March twenty twenty-three. Due to the timing this year, three cycles were billed in February and five cycles were billed in March because a billing date fell on March first current year. EMS fund revenue is also up because of increased EMS billings and ambulance alliance payment of ninety-three thousand, which received in March twenty twenty-three. Riverboat Gaming Trust Fund and Public Safety and Health Trust Fund revenue increased due to market value adjustments and unrealized gains for March twenty twenty-three. Page two is the expenses by fund. The city's currently thirteen percent under budget. The majority of the increase in water fund expenses is due to increases in chemicals and electricity for the water treatment plant and increase in mains repair and maintenance for water transmission and distribution. Page three is the sales tax comparative report. Sales tax revenue is up eight percent compared to March twenty twenty-two. Page four is the Manning report. There are three less employees than last month. And total employees as of month end is six hundred and sixty-three, forty below the budget. Page five is the Water and Sewer Utility Report. Net operating income after debt service for March twenty twenty-three has increased a hundred and eighty-six percent compared to March twenty twenty-two. And current year-to-date income has increased sixty-three percent from prior year and is seven percent under budget. On a rolling twelve-month basis, current net operating income is up eighty-six percent. Are there any questions?
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Engineering Department Monthly Project Report.
I lied to you. I didn't bring my own clicker.
I might have stuck something in here. Who's stuck something in here?
Good report.
Oh, you hadn't done it yet?
That's all I get. I'll make it quick, I promise. So still sitting at about ninety-seven million dollars ongoing design and construction costs, uh, construction projects, eighty-six that are in construction, nine designer bid, eight are in construction, and eight subdivisions are still tugging along. Ultra BB Carriage Way Phase Two, uh, they're sitting about twenty-seven days ahead, about sixty-four percent complete. You can see there, they got all the, uh, bridge girders there, also sitting there, come, getting ready to come over the railroad track. Got one or two more pictures here. I can get the.
You need to do it?
Yeah, if you don't mind. You can see that's the roundabout right there in front of the water plant at Hamilton Road, and it comes, that's looking about northeast, going back towards Benton Road. And then this is the approach slab coming off of Benton Road, uh, getting ready to go over the railroad track. So they're, they're out there really moving forward, getting that, getting that bridge done.
That's awesome, man.
So can you back up to that picture? So the road coming off of Citizens Bank Drive, is it gonna have to go further back west?
It's gonna go under the bridge.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, it's gonna have to be moved, moved back further. Is it still gonna be, I know Ben had talked about the, um, the walls coming down or something that it was gonna have to be?
The M S E wall, yes.
See where that wall is right there?
Yeah.
And kind of that track, that track pattern, that's, give or take, that's where it is.
That's where it's gonna go? Okay.
It has a little less curve and it to go perpendicular.
Okay.
Next one, please, ma'am. LTRI, uh, this one is getting ready to be substantially complete. Got an update from the architect this morning that they are, uh, they've already issued them one punch list of preliminary items that they're working on, on the second floor. And then they're looking at having the actual substantial completion done next week. So they'll be ready to start trying to close that project out. Highway seventy-one light and improvements, we are still waiting on material to be delivered. I believe Ben said last time, we're still, we're hearing about August. We do have some drainage problems that we are trying to alleviate due to the construction. We're trying to get the contractor to get out there alleviate those while we wait on the materials to get delivered. Swan Lake Road Traffic Signal, uh, the new detection equipment was installed. They were waiting on one additional piece, which is the advanced detection. But as of right now, the signal is running, uh, up and running. That's the only other piece that we lack on that one. And the Swan Lake Road Turn Lane, uh, if you've noticed, that is an old picture. Uh, if you've driven in there recently, we talked with the design engineer, along with the, our traffic engineer, Neil Schaefer, and they recommend go ahead and converting that to a through lane.
Can I show you something real quick?
Yes, sir.
I think Ben and we have talked about it.
It's only others.
Yes, sir.
So. Right there, you see the white car?
Yes, sir.
At some point, there's a line to stop, correct?
That's correct. The stop bar? Yes, sir.
And I think, Ben, we had talked about some type of larger sign letting like that white car know that he's gotta stop, because what happens is that they creep.
They creep to turn right and go south?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, what's y'all's suggestion?
Well, ma'am, I can make sure that that stop bar's in the right location, and then we'll also look at.
I mean, I'm talking about a sign that says, stop here, you know how?
Yes, sir.
No creeping.
Because a lot of people may not see.
Yeah, no creeping.
What's that?
No creeping, no creeping.
No creeping.
Well, the, we, we can get some signage up there. The original design was to have it as a free-flowing right because there was no through lane. And with the addition of it being converted into a through lane, we can get some additional signage added there.
That was nice. That traffic was all the way back to Monica Lot, and I was the only one in that lane. I was just going straight today. Everybody was.
It's a secret right now, but they're, they'll start to learn it.
Tell nobody. Yeah, I just got a couple of angry people, but I was the only one there, straight to the front of the line.
You just told everybody.
To be clear, your concern you wanna mitigate is that white vehicle inching out and then getting struck by a southbound vehicle in that lane?
Yeah, well, I mean, because let's say to us, the people that are coming out or coming down, and they're wanting to get on two twenty, right, west. You know, when we change lanes, these people are just.
They might already be in there.
So I, I just think you would say, you know, whatever the signage is, no creeping, stop here. That's gonna go down.
With a big line through it. No creeping.
Thank you for the time, Mr. Darby.
Sure. Well, we love it. Anytime, this show and tell, you know that.
I can get to your pointer next time, sweet point to the white car.
A little laser.
Yeah.
Moving on with the with the Bossier Arts Council, that one, they're, they've got a punch list set for that and substantial completion should be done early next week. Private Development, they fought a lot of rain the past couple of weeks, trying to keep everything dry, but they are trying to move forward. Kane's Landing, Unit Two, they're getting ready to start on Unit Three. And also the Cove out at the Velagio, they're blowing and going out there. Some of our projects that are in design are out to bid, lateral B one. We've got plans on on that ready to go. We're working with, trying to get our temporary construction easements and also our permanent easements for that project. Our Bardot Lane and Montgomery Lane Drainage Improvements, we've sent out right-of-entry agreements. And we've now sent out a second round of right-of-entry agreements and we've gotten a couple more back. So I think we're waiting on about four or five. And then once we have those, we'll be able to finalize that project and get it done. That's the ditch that kind of flows out there behind near two Johns. You're going to go back. I got, I got, let me touch on one more. The Parkway and Elm Grove Ditch, that was actually awarded last week. So as soon as we, we'll have a pre-bid or pre-construction conference on that one and we'll get a contractor moving and that'll help the drainage, not only on Seventy-One South, but right there just north of Elm Grove.
Clinton, on Arthur AT Parkway, is there any way at the both entrances coming off of Hamilton Road and then down coming off Sligo and also any way to get bigger signs put up that say no eighteen-wheelers? Instead of the little, instead of the little bitty ones, can we get a little bit bigger signs put up?
The one currently there is meets the MUTCD, but we can look at additional.
Maybe something with flashing lights on it and and everything.
I'll get with John.
The amount of them going up and down the Parkway, you could start, you're starting to see the wear and tear on the Parkway from those heavy loads.
I'll get with John. We'll see if we can come up with a solution.
Every entrance exit, there's a park, there's no trucking, but they just. Do this and drive on in it.
Hope for the best. There's one item on here that you can get into presentation.
Want to give you a quick update on the grant writing efforts. I think Councilman Smith had asked me about that. So we've submitted on two. We're working on the third. We submitted on what they call a raise grant. It was a big high-dollar grant, looking at upgrading the whole Hamilton Road corridor and the streets and things around that, kind of a gateway. And there's some other components about the location of that project that are beneficial to get awarding, to get that award. It's a big deal. We're pressing on that one, but it's complete. We submitted it a couple of months back. Last month, we completed what they call a Transportation Alternative Program grant. That's for just what it says, sidewalks and others. That project was put in for the North Gate area. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic in there. Has been for many, many years. Councilman Darby, you've wanted sidewalks there for for a long time. We feel pretty good about that one. That was submitted. Clinton actually hand-delivered that one a couple of weeks ago. So more to come on that. And then we're currently working on the electric vehicle infrastructure bill. We're working through kind of the nuances of that application. Pretty involved. That one is due end of May. Is that correct? Yeah, end of May. So quick update on that. I haven't got any money in, but but those are big lifts, pretty big applications. But I'm proud to see Bossier City getting into the into the fight on that. That combined with a DEQ grant that you guys are aware of, we submitted on that for about, you know, five million bucks. And then, of course, we got the Water Sector Program Grant. So we're pressing pretty hard on those fronts and I felt like y'all needed to be aware. I know Amanda's working with all the legislators in this current session to hopefully get some, you know, the piles of money they keep talking about there. So I'm sure more to come.
So what you're saying is that the money is coming.
We we we, yes, sir, we are working hard to make that happen.
All right, that's what we'd like to hear. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. There's just a few things. Some of these things everybody knows about, but I'm excited still about it. Of course, everybody knows we're excited about the Jimmy Davis Bridge, that it, you know, the money is gone and that's been awarded. There's going to be an I twenty rehab. It's expected to be let out in May to rebid. New gateway, new gateway signs, Bossier City Police Jury Sheriff and the Keep Bossier Beautiful are working together to update the signs on I twenty and I two twenty, those welcome signs coming in. And I think that's going to be great. We have a Rocket Fast Car Wash being built on Benton Road just right south of Viking. Southern Classic Chicken is about to be opened. Drago Seafood is about to be open in Margaritaville. Shane Seafood and Barbecue in the new location in South Bossier, they're saying that he's breaking records down there and that's that's awesome down there. Foundation Gaming, everybody knows Foundation Gaming sold to Cordish Gaming and that's going to be a big deal for Bossier City with Live coming here to Bossier City. I think it's all exciting there. The New Toll Bridge is moving in South Bossier. And Simple Church is looking to lease in Boardwalk, which is hopefully going to boost the Boardwalk and get that back going. And also I want to thank the council on letting Nina and Megan go out to the animal shelter and help out there because that has helped out dramatically. I mean, it's, I mean, there's not as many animals, animals coming, but also people are coming to get animals a whole lot more. And it's reduced the inventory out there, if you want to call it like that. But I want to thank y'all for for okaying that. And that's about it, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? No further discussion before the council, council adjutant.